You are watching Access Lapeur County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Lapeur County dot org.
Welcome to the Social Status of African American Male. It is February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I call this meeting in order and we all stand for the pledge, please. Mister Walker, could you lead us?
With allegiance to the flag.
Madam Secretary, let me have a roll call, please.
Kenny Fly.
Say it again, he's on.
He's on Zoom.
Present.
Stacy Benny.
Present.
Linda Conley. Pastor Carol.
Present.
Tony Cox.
Present.
Dwayne Hurt.
Pastor Hurt.
Pastor Johnson. Mike Jones.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
Fay Moore.
Present.
We have three new members. I'm gonna call their names. Mike Walker.
Present.
Taylor Tillman.
Present.
And Casey McCormick.
Present.
Thank you. We have a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. A present.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the January twenty twenty-four man.
Mr. Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone oppose? Pass. Treasure report.
Um, Mister President, I submitted via email the Treasury Report for January twenty twenty-four. We have a ending balance of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Now we're rich. I will entertain a motion to accept the treasure report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Onto new business. Um, it's time to have elections. I will open the floor to nominating for president.
All right.
Make the motion.
Mister Cox.
I move that. The standing committee, not, I mean, the standing officers, all be reinstated. All be, all be put on the ballot.
We have to do it one at a time that way.
Okay, and then I move that the president be put on the ballot.
Second.
Who was the president?
Yes, you.
We have one, we have nomination of second for Rodney McCormick. Um, any other nominations?
Uh, I nominate Mike Jones.
Nominee who?
Mike Jones.
Mike Jones.
Kenny just did.
Do we have a second for that nomination?
I'll second that.
Mike shaking his head.
Well, I'm gonna clap from there. I wanna, I wanna know more about bylaws and different stuff like that. I don't mind taking it, but I wanna know a little bit more before I take anything.
I help you out.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second for Mister Joe, Mister Jones, that's correct. You say yes?
Okay.
Yes, Mister Jones, is there any more nominations? All right, let's do the roll call from Commissioner McCormick first.
This is for Commissioner McCormick to be president. Kenny Fly.
Nay.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley abstain. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt. Robert Johnson, Mike Jones.
Nay.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Nay.
Mike Walker.
Aye.
Taylor Tillman. And Casey McCormick.
She didn't, she didn't vote, did she?
Yes, she did.
Yes, she did.
She said aye.
Oh, she said nay.
She said nay. She said nay?
She said nay. Casey McCormick. Okay, the eyes have it at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. For Rodney, three nays and one abstain.
Onto the Vice President.
I nominate Willie Millsap.
Second.
On the roll call, please.
Is there anybody else?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If we can turn our mics off after we speak, that'll, that'll help out a lot. Do, do we have any more nominations for Vice President? I'm sorry, forgive me.
I'd like to nominate Walter Cox.
I declare. Thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Any other nominations? Uh, nominate Pastor Hurt.
I second.
He declined.
Is there any more nominations? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mister Millsap is Vice President.
Mister Millsap as Vice President. Kenny Fly.
Nay.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley abstain. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Walter Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Stay.
Willie Millsaps.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Mike Walker.
Aye.
Taylor Tillman.
Aye.
Casey McCormick. Okay, we have ten ayes, one nay, two abstain. For Mister Millsap to be the VP.
Congratulations, Mister Millsap.
Thank you.
Uh, on to Secretary.
I nominate Linda Conley.
I decline. This is my last meeting.
I'd like to nominate Fay Moore.
Second. Any other nominations for Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Stacy Benny.
I graciously decline. Thank you. Commissioner Fly.
You're welcome.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we have a roll call on Secretary, please, Miss Moore.
Kenny Fly.
Nay.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley.
Aye.
Abstain. Cause I'm not gonna be here.
That's it.
So Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Walter Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Mike Walker.
Aye.
Taylor, Taylor Tillman.
Aye.
Casey McCormick.
Aye.
We have for Fay Moore to be the new secretary with a vote of eleven ayes, one nay, and one abstain.
Onto the treasurer. Uh, I'm gonna open nomination for treasurer.
Nominate Stacy Benny.
Second. Is there any other nominations? I nominate Mike Jones for treasurer.
replied.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, roll call on Miss Benny to be treasurer.
Kenny Fly.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Linda Conley abstain. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Walter Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Mike Walker.
Aye.
Taylor Tillman.
Aye.
Casey McCormick.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote for Stacy Benny to be the treasurer.
Thank you.
Now we are on to subcommittee appointments. Um, if we can just turn over the duties of Secretary at this time to Miss Moore, or if you're ready.
You're ready.
You don't mind doing it, or? Okay.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the first subcommittee is the Education Committee. Do we have anyone that wants to take on that job as the Education Chair? Any volunteers? Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Pastor Dwayne Hurt.
If I, if I may interject, I thought in the past what we did was, um, we see if anybody wants to be on each one of the subcommittees, and then when the subcommittees meet, they, they go ahead and, and yes, and pick their own persons. So if that's okay with everyone, I like to keep it that way, but if you wanna change it, I'm willing to do that as well.
I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement.
Chairman.
In agreement.
These, um, these subcommittees are very important. This, at the end of the year, we have to give a report, so we have to put some, um, we like to have everybody that's gonna be willing to participate. If you cannot do, if you can't show up to the, the subcommittee meetings or don't wanna be a part of it, just don't, don't sign up for it. That way we can, we can keep this going and it won't be no friction with anyone. So if we start, we, we have education, anybody would like to be on the Education Subcommittee, one at a time.
Okay. Yes.
Pastor Hurt, you raise your hand. Okay. That was Stacy Bennett. And Walter Cox.
Secretary, can you add me on the Educational, that's up committee?
And Kenny Fly.
Anyone else? Forgive me, anyone else? Okay, on to, where we have Criminal Justice?
Next is Health.
Health. Mister Johnson would like to be on that, Pastor Johnson would like to be on that subcommittee as well.
Okay, in the past Pastor Johnson was representing minority health, I believe he still is, so I'm gonna put him down as the chair. I will contact him and make sure that he accepts it.
Wow.
Or somebody else may wanna nominate or volunteer.
Okay, so we'll just put Pastor Johnson down as the committee person.
Anyone for, anyone for Health Subcommittee, please announce your name.
Fay Moore.
It's Health.
It's Health.
Mike Jones.
Anyone else? Miss Tillman.
What's your first name? Kayla.
Can you turn the mic on, please?
My first name is Kayla, K A Y.
T A Y, T L O. Thank you. Anyone else? I have four on the Health Committee, and I have four on the Education Committee. Employment. Willie Millsap.
Myself.
Casey McCormick.
Is that mic working?
Casey McCormick.
Mister, Mister Chair.
So far I have Willie Millsap, Casey McCormick, and Rodney McCormick.
There's any, wait, I'm sorry.
Please be advised, uh, the chair is on all the committees, so he doesn't have to be picking, choosing which one by virtue of being in the chair, you're on all the committees.
If you so.
Okay.
Anybody else wanna join us on, uh?
Employment Committee.
Hearing none, let's go on to the next one, Miss Moore.
The next one is Criminal Justice.
Could you place me on that?
Stacy. I'll remain on it.
I'll remain on it.
Taylor Tillman.
And Mike Walker. Aye, Mister Fly.
Yeah, you sure. So I got Stacy, I got, um, case, was that Casey or Taylor? I got, I got Miss, Miss Till.
Something.
Oh, you didn't say.
No, Commissioner McCormick said it.
Cox, okay. Yeah, I did have.
Yeah, Commissioner Fly as well.
Thank you.
You had Mike.
And Mike Walker.
Excuse me, Madam Secretary, I'm gonna remove myself from that at this time.
Okay.
Is there any, is there anyone else?
Mike Walker.
Yeah, we got you.
We got you. Okay, so I have, I have Walter Cox, Taylor Tillman, Kenny Fly, Mike Walker. And Pastor Hurt. Anyone else? Okay. So that's fine. Social Factors is the last committee.
I will stay on that with you, Miss Moore.
Okay, Fay Moore. I wasn't gonna stay on it. I wasn't gonna be on any committee. Okay, Rodney McCormick, Fay Moore. Anyone else?
Social Factor.
Social Factors.
Since Reverend Johnson's not here, put him on it.
I'll talk to him. Okay. And I just wanna remind everyone that you can have people on your committees that are not members of the commission. They can meet with you and they can help you on whatever projects you're working on, and they do not have to be commissioner, um, members. Because that really, you need to get community people involved with every committee that we're working with, cause it makes your committee stronger and it gives you more, uh, community, um, more awareness out in the community, makes the community more aware of what the Social Status Commission is doing.
Mister Cox, also may I point out to the new members that everybody is welcome at every committee, every subcommittee meeting. You don't have to be a member of that subcommittee to be involved and participate. Miss, Miss Benny.
I'd like to encourage, first of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Conley for the work that she did as Secretary, but I'd like to encourage her to also participate in being on the subcommittees, remain, um, active with the commission.
Okay, I turn the meeting back over to our Chair.
Now that we have all that done, we, um, how we usually do the meetings, um, the meet, the people will meet, and then we will send out an agenda, um, by email, so if we can get everybody, um, all the newcomers, if you can just write down your email on a piece of paper and give it to the secretary, so that way we can add you to the email chain. And, and all the subcommittees, if, if we can, um, can we just give out a monthly report, a written report, so we can keep track of everything that we're doing? So at the end of the year, we can make it easier on the secretary and all of us when we, when we prepare our, um, our, uh, state, uh, our address to the City Council and the Mayor's Office, that will help us out a lot. Um, again, we're not in competition with anyone. Um, we also like to know any, any newcomers, do you wanna be on the, uh, fundraiser committee? You hitting that up, right, Mister?
Yeah, um, uh, Mister Chair, just to give you some good news, Linda agreed to work with the fundraising committee, so.
Thank you. So, anyone else wanna be added to the fundraiser committee?
Taylor Tillman.
Stacy Benny.
Keep it going.
Casey McCormick.
You already on it. Oh, and there's a fifty dollar statement fee.
Is it, was, uh?
It wasn't?
No.
Oh, we all donated a hundred. Yeah, everybody anyway. We have it all. You have it, Miss Moore?
On the fundraising committee, I have Willie Millsap, Stacy Bennett, Casey McCormick, Pastor Hurt, Linda Conley, and Rodney McCormick. And, okay, Taylor Tillman. Anyone else that I missed? Mike?
You can go ahead and put my name on there, too.
Thank you.
You ran out on this.
I didn't say your name. I'm so sorry. Charge it to the eyes and not the heart.
Okay, now we come to the point where, um, the introduction of, uh, the new commissioners, so, um, if we can just start at this end, Mister Walker, you can introduce yourself, um, you wanna give a brief bio, or you wanna, whatever it is you wanna say, go ahead, take your time, and let's move on to McCormick afterwards. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Walker. I'm a longtime resident of Michigan City. Um, retired from Lapeur County Sheriff's Office. Kinda excited to be on this board, to be a part of some change. Um, I'm quite accessible. I also work day hours at the hospital. Um, I'm excited to be on this, this board of Criminal Justice and look at our reentry programs that we have in our community or lack thereof, and make a little bit of change that way. Thank you for having me.
Welcome, Mike.
Thanks for participating, Mister Walker. Mister McCormick.
Hi, good morning. Casey McCormick. I'm a new resident of Michigan City. I moved here with my wife and our two children last June. Um, and I'm looking to, to get involved in the community. I, I believe in getting involved. Um, we moved here from, uh, from California. We were out in, uh, in the Los Angeles area for about fifteen years. Uh, grew up on the South Side of Chicago. And, um, yeah, happy to be involved and looking to, uh, to do what I can.
Welcome aboard and thank you for participating, volunteering. Miss Tillman.
Um, Taylor Tillman, born and raised in Michigan City. I currently am a Michigan City Police Officer, coming up on two years now. Um, I look forward to all of this committee has to offer and how I can help and I can jump in there and, uh, make a difference. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you and welcome aboard to volunteering. Um, is there anyone that wanna ask any of the new commissioners anything? After today, they will no longer be new. They are all in, so they're all in with us. Mister Carol, Pastor Carol.
Yeah, yes, um, uh, I've been here for, uh, under commission, uh, social status for, uh, nine years, ten, ten years, something like that. Um, retired hospice chaplain, um, retired hospital chaplain, uh, I work a little bit with them, uh, as a police chaplain, not very much. My heart's with them more. And praying for each and every one of you always. And, um, uh, happy to be seeing new faces on the board and welcome and, um, welcome to everybody and bless you all. Well, uh, well, well, you know, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say it, I probably shouldn't say it, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Uh, yeah, uh, I just had a birthday, uh, and, um, I thought I turned forty. Uh, what are you laughing about?
What tricked you?
Well, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not saying, well, now you, you gotta add another forty on to that. Yeah, so, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you and God bless all of you. Welcome new ones.
Um, Miss Moore, um, we usually do this, um, we took this off our agenda because we have newcomers. Can you, um, cite the mission statement for the social status of African American males?
I will read the mission statement. The mission of the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males is to study the social conditions of the state's black male population, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities, and make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic, employment, and other circumstances for Hoosiers. The commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media, community organizations, and members of the general public. That is our mission statement.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. I, I'm going to go down to subcommittee reports, and just because we are fairly new, this is our first meeting, basically, I just wanna skip all the way down to employment, and I wanna let Mister Millsap, uh, give us some good news that's happened in the county.
Okay, first of all, take one, pass it down. Pass it down. Take one, pass it down. While you guys are receiving your informational packet for the employment report for today's meeting, uh, I spoke with Monique Thomas, and she wanted me to share with you the good news that she is official now as of January the twenty-ninth, right before Black History Month. She is now the Page Director for Lapeur County, and she wanted to, me to tell you guys that thank you for your prayers and support. So, uh, we're moving forward. And she's in the process of looking for an assistant, so if you know anyone who is interested, uh, please contact her office and move forward. In your informational packet that I distributed to you, all of the commissioners, first page is a document from Work One stating the services they provide for the city of Michigan City. Uh, one of the service, uh, make note is free virtual and in-person workshop. The second document is a form for the youth of our commu- community. It has steps for success and scholarship assistance. And the third document is a listing of the most current job openings in our area, so please share these with anyone that, uh, needs some employment assistance. Thank you.
I just wanna add to, um, Ms. Thomas, um, being hired, um, it's a great day when a person is hired because of their education and because of their experience and not their skin color. Um, it's been a long time coming, and that's great news for, uh, Lapeur County. She's been there for a while and I know she'll do a great job. I just wanna say, um, thanks to the county commissioners, county council, and anyone else that had anything to do with it. Thank you.
Um, and I also have a packet for Mister Fly. I also have a packet, so contact Fay and you can receive your packet.
Commissioner Fly?
Appreciate you, Commissioner Millsap. I'll receive the packet. Uh, President, if I may have one quick second with you right quick, if that's okay?
Hey, yes, is this what, what you discussed in the email?
Uh, no, no, I.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
I'm saying, uh, so, uh, Chairman McCormick, I know, um, we got a full house now with social status, and it looked very diverse, man. I, I really look forward to, um, really greeting everyone, and I would like to be in person more than likely, more now that the weather has broken, considering I am handicapped in a wheelchair. And so I don't want a conflict of interest occurring, Mister McCormick, I mean, uh, Chairman, you know, uh, the only seat I will be able to sit in is right there that's able, right where the chair was at, and I didn't wanna discern your spot or make you feel any kind of way if I had to pull up and like came to the meeting and that's the only spot I could sit. I, I want to know how would you feel about that, or if that would be okay with you to maybe bump over one and still run the meeting, but being able to let me be there physically with you guys, that's the only reason I've been zooming, I, because I, I didn't want no conflict.
Commissioner Fly, if we can address that off the record, and I can address that through you, through email, if we need to, we will just move it upstairs to the, uh, to the mayor's conference. if we need to, we will just move it upstairs to the uh, to the mayor's conference room upstairs to where is uh, everybody can sit, that needs, need to happen. Um, what's important about sitting in this middle seat is you can able to see everybody who needs to be answered or or stuff that's going on, so we, we will address that, we will address that uh, before our next meeting.
All right, thank you, uh, Chairman McCormick.
Yes. Um, is there any, for health, is anybody from subcommittee for health that's, has anything they would like to add for a meeting time? How about criminal, I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Johns.
Okay, I thought in December meeting you was gonna be, the health department was gonna be here, but they didn't come, but do you know anything about that?
I know nothing of the, nothing of that. And since you brought that up, if I may, all subcommittees, I encourage you to go find guest speakers. I encourage each and every one of you bring guest speakers in here, and so we don't overlap one another. Just send out a email, say, hey, I got somebody who would like to come and speak on whatever issue. But I think that every, how many subcommittees do we have? We should have five guest speaker, we should have at least ten guest speakers coming here and speak, speak about our, our subcommittees, or on behalf of one of our subcommittees. Let's, let's try to encourage doing that this year, as opposed to only having three or four people come in. Mr. Millsap.
With that being said, I would like to uh, reserve May uh, for the Swanson Center Mental Health, uh, that's uh, Mental Health Month and hopefully they have a report on the status of the mental health in the black community. So schedule me for May. My speaker, rather.
Commissioner Benny?
Even though I'm not, uh, I was previously on the Criminal Justice Subcommittee. I am going to work on, um, in the past, we did have um, the prior LaPorte County Prosecuting Attorney, John Lake, we also had prior um, Police Chief Forker. I'm going to be trying to secure our, I'm a juvenile probation officer, everybody knows. Um, gonna try to secure our juvenile magistrate to come in, um, to assist with the Criminal Justice Subcommittee. So that we won't duplicate someone looking for a speaker in that arena.
Okay, moving on to uh, social factors, Ms. Moore. I'm sure we, we find someone, I know that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Social factors, we all know this is Black History Month, and there are lots of activities going on for Black History Month. And um, uh, Saturday was the Health Fair and the Quiz Bowl. And uh, New Hope Church won first place in the Quiz Bowl, New, New Hope Church, and second place was the NAACP's team. And on this uh, Saturday is the um, traditional Essence Rare Black Expo at the Lighthouse Place Mall. So we would like for you guys to support the Black Expo. It's at the uh, store number one seven five oh, next to the Gap. And it's from twelve o'clock until four o'clock, the Essence Rare Black Expo. They always have their Black Ex, well, they've had their Black Expo before we started Black History Month, and um, so we hope that people will support Saturday, February the seventeenth, uh, from noon to four, Lighthouse Place Mall, number one seven five oh, next to the Gap. There'll be different vendors there with their wares, um, food and clothing, jewelry, all kinds of products for the skin, and also there'll be entertainment. I do know the Soul Step is gonna be, I don't know of the other groups that are gonna be there, but they have like entertainment every hour uh, on the hour for the, during the Black Expo. Also, we have um, Sunday, it's Gospel Fest, Salvation Army, Michigan City, uh, two to five. The Salvation Army, they've got Joyful Gospel Fest, a night of radical praise. Sunday, February the eighteenth, from two to five P M. For Black History Month. And then Saturday, Indiana Black Expo is having the Masquerade Ball at the D A V on Ohio Street. The tickets, I think, are thirty dollars, and it's uh, starts at six thirty. That's Indiana Black Expo's uh, Masquerade Ball for Black History Month. And uh, at the D A V on Ohio Street, and it starts at six thirty. And every Thursday, there are movies being shown at the um, police, Michigan City Police Community Room at five thirty. And let me see if I have to, oh, yes, this uh, Thursday, the movie is The Woman King is the movie, and they start at five thirty, and um, there's usually popcorn and water. And on the twenty second, the movie is Judas and the Black Messiah. And on the twenty ninth, the movie is, uh, don't have it, but there is a movie. And um, but I don't have the title. And uh, there's a discussion after the movie. The movie usually is about two hours, so um, please celebrate Black History Month with the Michigan City Black History Month Committee. Questions? Five thirty, the movies at the Michigan City Police Community Room, your enter off of Cleveland Avenue for the, um, to get to the community room at the Michigan City Police Department.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Um, I'm gonna go on to education. Uh, Mr. Hurd, is anything you'd like to say?
I would like to form a team of this group or community, people that wish to go into the school on a regular basis. I go on lunch hours. Uh, it's convenient for me. I just hang out in the lunchroom with the kids, so they know who I am. Uh, it develops a respect in both directions. Just for them seeing a grown-up in the school outside of the teachers is very helpful. So anybody interested in that, let me know. Uh, of course, you have to do a background check. But uh, that's an easy process. And I think it's something that's simple, but something that will go a long way, that they saw more outsiders inside of the school.
They reported that you were taking the kids' mouths.
I do what I can.
Your contact information, please.
Mike, two one nine, three six nine, three two six zero. Mr. Johns, Commissioner Johns.
Uh, on education, uh, do you know anything they're doing for Black History Month in the school system? Anything they, you know, get programs or anything?
I do not, uh, except with the exception of what she was talking, but that's outside of, so.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Mi- Mr. Commissioner Fly? I think this would be a good time for you to come in. You're muted.
Sorry about that, President Chairman. Thank you for letting me slide in right about this time for education. Um, Fly, youth has been granted some more grant money, and as of uh, lately, we kind of went low on our enrollment status because of uh, unknown reasons, really, students and youth haven't been really reaching out to outreach programs as much lately. I think it's even been down and even at uh, the Boys and Girls Club or even uh, some participation at the YMCA's uh, outreach programs. And so uh, that, with this uh, forum, I like students, youth, or even um, the alternative school youth, and even youth that's not in school, they can still come by uh, two twenty-two McClellan Avenue, between four thirty and six thirty, and um, sign yourself up to our after-school program. Also, what we're trying to do new with this uh, this group of new directors that we hu- we've hired, which is Aubria Clifton, Antonio Hertz, and also um, Kyron, Kyron Webb. What they want to do is, even with the youth that doesn't want to really be signed up, but just want to have an avenue or somewhere to go, that they can also come in and they will um, let them participate with any dating functions we have them while they're there. More than likely, I wouldn't be participating or there as much because I have another um, I'm sorry about, sorry about that. I have other uh, priorities going on now, so I wouldn't be there, but those directors will be. And they're willing to let open-door youth just come in and participate whether they signed up or not. The West Side kids, they can walk right to the building, and they also have a bus that's been updated uh, with all kind of hand controls if I do decide to drive it. And um, different kind of functions on it, make it more applicable for the youth. So if they can't reach the school, they can be picked up by the bus driver, they leave their name and, and whatnot, and uh, we just want more enrollment. You know, it's a blessing to be getting this funding like this. It's usually not that easy to get funding, so we at least want to use it properly and on the right, right uh, targeted youth we like. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Fly. I'm gonna move on to public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me, Commissioner Benny.
I, I failed to announce um, an upcoming um, group, it's a program, walking into womanhood and bridge to um, manhood, it's basically a collaboration between LaPorte Circuit Court and the schools as well. Um, the next sessions are March the ninth and March the sixteenth, from eight thirty to noon. Um, it's designed, it's a local program designed for female and male youth ages thirteen to eighteen. Topic, um, topics covered, but not limited to our morale, social norms, values, um, earned and gained respect, discrimination, real and perceived, and discrimination. They talk about changes in yourself and others', education, peer pressure, rules, and guidelines, and real life experiences. It's limited to twenty-five youth. Um, attendance is required for both sessions. The drop-off begins at eight thirty and pickup is at twelve noon. It'll take place at the Michigan City High School at eighty-four sixty-six West Paz Road. Breakfast starts at eight thirty. There is a reservation, um, you have to call the um, LaPorte County number two one nine three two six six eight oh eight and extension twenty-three ninety-nine to reserve.
Thank you, Commissioner Benny. Is there anyone else? We're gonna move on to public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to, before we adjourn, I'm gonna start off with Mr. uh, Commissioner McCormick, um, and if we can go around the room, if any, any commissioner would like to add something at this time, or state something that's on their mind, uh, try to keep it brief. Uh, we're gonna start off with Mr. McCormick.
Um, none at this time. Thank you for having me, and I'm gonna give it my best shot here.
Thank you. Ms. Tillman?
Um, I have nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Cox?
I've said all I want to say.
No comment.
I would like to thank the three new commissioners for coming on board. And um, like Mr. McCormick said, we are a working group, and um, you will be put to work.
Mr. Pastor Carroll?
My prayers are with our new commissioners and uh, uh, with our new administration, our new mayor, and um, uh, all of our citizens of Michigan City. We keep them all in prayer. And uh, that's my report. God is good.
Yes, he is. Commissioner Millsap?
Yes, I just want the uh, people that want to be on the uh, fundraising committee, if you can still stick around after the meeting for about five minutes.
Ms. Conley, I'm sorry.
I don't really have anything to say, except, um, welcome to the new members and good luck.
Commissioner Johns?
Uh, welcome to the new commissioners and hate to see Ms. Conley leave.
She's not leaving. She's gonna be our fundraising lady.
Mr. Walker?
Just a pleasure to be here and glad you guys having me. Um, after the meeting, can we get with the Criminal Justice Group, so I can get information phone numbers? Thanks.
And with that being said, um, I just want to make sure everyone know. Mr. Fly, Commissioner Fly, I'm sorry.
I wasn't gonna trip on you, President. I, I pretty much have everything I need to say, brother.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I just want everyone here to know that um, we leave our personal stuff outside of the meetings. When we come into this meetings, we have to show decorum. We can't talk over each other, we can't get, we, we'll disagree to disagree. At the end of the day, we have to do what's right for the people of the city. And we can't, we can't do anything to um, to jeopardize that, so that's the most important thing for me and uh, for this committee. We have to work together in order to make this work. Well, one person doesn't run the soul show. I'm president just in name, and he, I need everyone, all of us got to be together to make this work. And if we all in agreements on doing that, we're gonna, we're gonna be okay. It's gonna come a time where people have to step up their roles, and they might accept roles they didn't want to accept. So, um, I'm gonna make sure I do my part. Um, I will alternate the president's seat um, a few times this year, give people's a chance to get uh, uh, the experience of being behind this, this mic and uh, in this seat. Uh, with that being said, I would entertain a moment.
Second.
Everybody in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.